I'll turn that on, look at that. Hello and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, December 2nd. Fun fact, it is the last Committee of the Whole meeting for the council of, for City Council as we move into the new schedule for the new year. So I'm going to start today. My name is Tanil Bonagor, I'm the Ward Councillor for Ward 7. For anyone who's new to chambers, the mayor is here, he is on my left. So we would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather today is the land traditionally used by the Haudenosaunee, Anishnaabe, and neutral people. We also acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge and philosophies of the indigenous people with whom we share this land today. So to get us started, I ask for the disclosure of any pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Looking around, I see none. So I ask for the approval of minutes for the November 4th Committee of the Whole meeting. Do I have someone? Councillor Henmer? Councillor Freeman? Second? All in favour? That's everyone? Thank you. And that gets us tidily on to our delegations. First today, we have a delegation regarding the 2020 Special Olympics Spring Games, and I invite Inspector Mark Crowell and Cooper Moore up to the podium. Welcome.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Jaworski and members in council. Thanks so much for the kind invitation. Are you okay? Very pleased to be here. My name is Inspector Mark Crowell, I'm here on behalf of Chief Brian Larkin, and thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity to showcase the Waterloo Region's hosting of the 2020 Special Olympics Ontario Spring Games. This is a fantastic opportunity for our entire region, and particularly the city of Waterloo, to embark on this incredible journey of bringing athleticism, recreation, and celebration on a number of levels. And although I'm providing the bulk of the delegation today, we have a very inspiring address at some point. So our Waterloo Region is hosting the games, and this will bring not only economic benefits to the city and our region, but we'll be hosting about 2,500 plus people between May 21st and May 23rd of 2020. This will bring 635 athletes, or more than 150 coaches, over 400 families and supporters, and over 500 volunteers, bringing people together primarily within the city of Waterloo. Some events will be held in Kitchener as well, but bringing people together not only to promote recreation, athleticism, but it'll bring a spirit of excitement, volunteerism, and really a celebration of the human spirit. So for those of you who don't know, the worldwide movement of the Special Olympics that's been around for several decades, this initiative seeks to promote empowerment, excellence in sport, and really community connections, a respect, a celebration of diversity, and also a sense of inclusion. And the vision here is that we're coming together as a community to provide a sense of belonging for everybody, and really just to have some fantastic fun together. And our Police Service, the Waterloo Regional Police, is very happy to serve as the ambassadors and key organizers for this event, but it truly is a community collaborative effort to bring things together. So we do have a very short, one-minute video that just speaks to the spirit of the games and the spirit of where we're heading as we approach this fantastic event.
The right to play on any playing field? You have earned it. The right to hold a job? You have earned it. The right to study in any school? You have earned it. The right to be anyone's neighbour? You have earned it. You have taught us that what matters is not power or politics, weapons or wealth. What truly counts is the courageous spirit and the generous heart. The days of separation and segregation are over.
So you can see there by the fantastic video that the spirit here is one of inclusion revolution, and this is a fantastic opportunity for the city of Waterloo to be featured prominently in this adventure that we embark together. So we have made a formal request that's included in the delegation package in terms of a request for the city of Waterloo to serve as a full partner and local sponsor for the events. This will include a rental facility fee of about $32,000 estimated for the use of the Waterloo Memorial Recreation Complex. And we're also making equivalent requests not only of other municipalities, local educational facilities and so on, but also embarking into private sector requests as well. To give you a sense of what this is going to look like and how fantastic it's going to be, we're embarking upon hosting five key sports: rhythmic gymnastics, powerlifting, basketball, ten-pin bowling, and aquatics. And to give you a sense of the cohesiveness of how this will come together, it really is unique. Other municipalities that have taken on hosting of the games have been sort of spread out and at the benefit of only recreational facilities, but hosting this with the city of Waterloo and especially with Wilford-Laurie University as a key partner will allow us to come together as one, as sort of a community village. So the rhythmic gymnastics will be held at the Waterloo Rec Complex. Powerlifting will be held nearby at the Wilford-Laurie University Stadium Gym. Basketball will be co-hosted at the Laurier Athletic Complex as well as St. David Catholic Secondary School. Ten-pin bowling will be held at the Kingpin Bowl Lounge at Binghamton Centre. And the aquatics event will also be held at Wilford-Laurie University. So you can get a sense of how cohesive this will be in terms of travel, bringing people together, and keeping people together. The Athletes' Village will be held on the main campus of Wilford-Laurie University. And the key parts are hosting both the opening and closing ceremonies that will be held at the Waterloo Memorial Complex. We're very pleased that this has all come together and the planning and the heavy lifting continues. So you've heard enough from me, I now want to have Cooper Moore come forward to feature a few words about what the hosting of this will mean for the 2020 Spring Games and just what it means for him to be a special athlete. So Cooper Moore.
Thanks, Mark. Lucky fan, my name is Cooper Moore, I'm an athlete with the Special Olympics, and I'm participating in the 2020 Spring Games in the aquatics sector. So hearing that I made it through the provincial swim team was very exciting for my mom and I. She could not stop jumping up and down for joy. I know that there is nothing stopping me or getting in my way. I'm excited for the, have the opportunity to compete in the Spring Games, have fun, and try my very best. My parents' brother are not, my parents and brother are very excited and they can't wait to cheer me on. Athletes are coming all over Ontario. We want to ensure to, so that they have an experience of a lifetime in Waterloo Region that they will never forget. By sponsoring an athlete for the 2020 Spring Provincial Games, you're providing the opportunities for me and the athletes to make memories that will last a lifetime. So thank you one advance. Thank you for the invitation, invitation for me to come here and speak to you guys and hope to see you all in the stands, cheer the athletes on.
Do you stand with me, Cooper?
Yep.
Okay, just move over a little.
Sound good.
All perfect. So thank you, Cooper. So the sense of enthusiasm and passion that Cooper has, you can sense that'll be ripple effect and replicated for every athlete, every family coming to our community. And we thank you for your contributions thus far. We've been promoting this in different ways, and Cooper's been a big part of that along with many others. As I wrap up, we've just launched our Draft an Athlete program, which provides an opportunity for community members, families, agencies, teams of all kinds to get behind the games, to promote the athletes as they're drafted into preparing for the games, and this is something that's been featured in all our promotional material. So in closing, I just want to thank you for this tremendous opportunity that's before you today in terms of the opportunity for not only the city of Waterloo, but to co-host this with many partners that have stepped forward to promote this fantastic event. And I'm very pleased to announce that on December 12th, the Waterloo Regional Police Service Badging Ceremony will be hosted at the Laurier's Lazarida School of Business. And as we welcome 20 new officers forward in the badging ceremony, we'll also be providing a formal announcement. Mayor Jaworski's been invited to attend, and we'll be announcing with Deb McClatchy, President of Wilford-Laurie University, in terms of the co-hosting partnership of these games. So subject to any questions or dialogue, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you both for coming, and Cooper, I have to say, I'm originally from Australia and we're really into our aquatics, so I'll be cheering you on too. Any questions or comments for the delegates? Come, Mayor Jaworski.
Well, thank you through the chair. What a wonderful opportunity to have the Special Olympics come to Waterloo Region for 2020. You know, we tried to get the Children's Summer Games and that didn't work out for us, so I'm even more thrilled to get the Olympics to come here. I don't think we heard a date, is it August or what's the timeframe of this?
It'll be May 21st to May 23rd of 2020.
Okay. You know, I think, I think, Cooper, you'll have a special experience here and just think that's, you know, hosted right here in Waterloo. I know Commissioner Mark Dykstra's certainly been working on this file for a few weeks now, and we'll have something figured out in the next couple of weeks for us so that we can come, come and be a sponsor. I think that's something that'll be very exciting for the city of Waterloo and just all the excitement this brings to our area. And special thank you to Chief Larkin, who has put a lot of heart and soul into this for decades, and I know it's so near and dear to his heart, and for him and his actions to bring it here through Waterloo Regional Police Service, I think it just does so much for our community. So thank you on my behalf.
Thank you.
Any other, okay, not seeing any others, so I'd like to thank you both very much for coming in and wish you all the best with the games.
Yeah, why? Thank you.
Moving ahead, we have our next delegation, and first, there's three delegates who are each coming to discuss related issues. First of all, we have Sylvia Skorj, I'd like to invite you to come up to the, to the microphone. And if you could please state your name and your city of residence, please.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Skorj, and I'm a resident of Waterloo. Good afternoon, council and Mayor Dave. Some of you may remember me from the council meeting on October the 7th, where David Mosko, Karen Maldonado, and I spoke about the problems that the city of Waterloo is facing in regards to housing, specifically student housing, along with our proposed solutions. After having listened to the feedback from councillors and officials in countless meetings and sleepless nights filled with research and debates, my members and I have updated our proposals and our action plan so that it speaks more to the municipality and acts as a starting point for legislation changes and improvement for the housing situation. Today, I will be addressing the issues surrounding student housing in Waterloo and its inevitable impacts on mental health. After that, we will have David speak and Karen. To start off, Waterloo is facing a housing crisis. There is a lack of universally affordable housing. Rent that is $670 per month is considered cheap, and that's if you're lucky enough to find something that cheap. For people on social assistance or even OSAP, a cheap apartment can easily account for more than half of their total income, leaving next to nothing for groceries, transportation, and other needs. Another issue we are addressing is a failure of landlords to provide adequate living conditions. There are students dealing with cockroaches, bedbugs, rats. Don't get me wrong, there are students who of course like to party, break the rules, and make a mess, but that stereotype is the exception rather than the norm. We came here from all over the world to learn, not party. Many of us spend all our weekends working hard at our jobs and studying for our futures and are capable enough of maintaining and cleaning our properties. Next, landlords routinely exploit tenants and violate the law without consequence. Key deposits legally can only cover the cost of replacing keys but routinely act as a damaged deposit. It is one of the most common complaints from tenants in Waterloo despite being in violation of subsection 134 bracket 1(c) of the Residential Tenancies Act of 2006. There have been cases where a unit was advertised as available but was not ready for moving at the start of the lease, leaving the prospective person suddenly without housing. One of our focuses of criticism is that the LTB complaint resolution process is inadequate. Students have a limited budget and $50 can make a huge difference as to whether they bother reporting the problem or not. In addition to the fee, the waiting time dissuades many tenants from doing so, and for students, the resolution time can easily exceed the duration of their stay. Landlords take advantage of the service gap to dodge responsibility, ignore maintenance requests, even if that means that they're in violation of safety codes, because they know that they'll get away with it. Another factor that prevents students, student tenants from filing a complaint is in the word itself: students. Students are in survival mode. They are more concerned with their studies than with addressing housing issues. Sometimes we have to put our own emotional health to the side, our sanity to the side, our sleep schedules, our own needs to the side, just so that we can be successful in university and catch up with our bills. Some of us don't have the time and energy to deal with things that we shouldn't be dealing with, yet alone individually dealing with in the first place. We are seeing more suicides and more alarming cases surrounding mental health. How are we as future leaders even supposed to progress in society if we can't even focus in class at this very moment because we're spending so much time worrying about housing issues? How are we expected to be academically successful if we are spending countless nights doing research and we're up here speaking at council when we should be dealing with other things like studying for a test tomorrow? We just want to learn. The last problem is homelessness. To have hard-working students sleeping in their cars and living on the streets is completely unacceptable. There are only 241 beds available in the region, 46 of which are reserved for youth between the ages of 12 and 25, and this does not remotely meet the needs and demands of not only the homeless population, homeless student population, but the homeless population of the region before students are factored in. There are no homeless shelters in the city of Waterloo. We shouldn't go through this. We just want to learn. Since the last council meeting with my group on October the 7th, a few students and members from the community, along with myself, have been meeting regularly and have taken many eventful actions. Some of these accomplishments and ongoing actions include I have helped with the creation of an information-packed workshop with general legal information around tenants' rights on November the 12th. My members and I have revised and finalized our action plan document. My letter was forwarded by the Office of the Prime Minister, Justin Trudeau, to Dr. Antoine, Manager of Mysterial Affairs.
Ms. Skorj, can I just ask you to slow down a little bit while you're speaking, please? I really want to be able to hear everything you're saying.
Sorry. We have teamed up with students from the Geospatial Club at UW and have started to put together a map that shows data on how landlords have been mistreating their tenants. We had a meeting with Jeff Henry and Shane Turner at City Hall where we went over what their team has done about the issue since their last council meeting on October the 7th, and we went over our proposal document. Next up, we have David, who will go more in depth about the issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David, if you wouldn't mind just saying your full name and your city of residence, please.
Absolutely. My name is David Mosko, and I'm a resident of Waterloo. So just for some context, Sylvia was trying to set the scene for us. When we did initially sign up for this meeting, we were expecting more individual allotment of time, so she was rushing more as a consequence and function of having to fit in more information than less time.
You do have individual allotments of time.
We do have 10 minutes' time per person.
Yep. That's, so that's how, you're listed, that's why you're listed separately on the agenda here, but that's...
So we saw that under one subheading, and I believe there was a miscommunication on our part, so pardon us in that regard. At any rate, this does give me more time to, more carefully and deliberately go over my speech, so all the same, pardon us in that regard. So Sylvia's speech was more a primer, and as mentioned, we are working with members of council presently, and we will continue to do so. However, it does still seem prudent to take this time when necessary to maintain the fact that this is a relevant issue, these are pertinent issues, so we will continue to discuss these matters. With that being said, I will, I suppose, begin my talk now. I'm here to talk today specifically about the urgent need for more care with regards to homeless people in the region of Waterloo. One avenue to help alleviate these social problems is with homeless shelters and social housing. The city of Waterloo, as mentioned, lacks a homeless shelter despite having a population in excess of 110,000, leaving many out to dry. Little data is available about the full, far-reaching extent and scope of homelessness in the Waterloo region. The only information I personally was able to find was a single article mentioning the deaths of seven homeless people in the Waterloo region in the winter of 2011. What we do know is that this situation is not isolated to 2011. There's no reason to believe so. The conditions have not improved since then. Indeed, they've only worsened. Where there may not be data available directly about homelessness in Waterloo, we can look to other regions for insight on the matter. Advocates in Toronto, including councillors and members of provincial parliament, have called on Toronto to issue a state of emergency over homelessness after several homeless deaths already in the winter season of this year. Toronto's housing market is certainly in a different league than ours, but the symptoms are the same. Housing prices have been rising in Waterloo, pardon me, housing prices have been rising in Waterloo several times the rate of inflation for years, with the average cost of a Waterloo rental being 20% higher than in 2012, from an average student rental cost of $870 in 2012 to $1,042 in 2017. 63% of homeless Canadians have cited high rent costs as a reason for their homelessness. The material conditions that lead to homelessness are staring us in the face, and it's not even being subtle about it. Homelessness is a systemic problem that's been repeatedly individualized but whose roots are decidedly systemic. The very fact that Canada has had varying rates of homelessness historically should be proof enough alone of this. The fact that some countries have effectively virtually solved homelessness should be enough to underscore homelessness as a systemic social issue it is. Finland has practically zero homeless people due to their radical and downright common-sense approach of giving permanent housing to people as soon as they become homeless. We need policy leaning in that direction. In no uncertain terms, austerity kills. Scrimping and means testing kills citizens. There are people on the streets of this very city right now trying to stay warm that have inadequate shelter to turn to. The UN Commission on Human Rights has guidelines for how prisoners are to be housed, which stipulates housing multiple people to the same area is a last resort that must be done with care and monitoring. Shelters in this sense are quite literally less of a humane place to sleep than prisons, as shelters feature a slew of cots in the same room with no separation or real genuine consideration as to who is sleeping where. Shelters are currently inadequate and inhumane. Not only does Waterloo need one, but we need to develop one that treats people with dignity and care. The main thesis of what I'm saying is that long-term planning needs to happen to capture the ways to mitigate homelessness and to accommodate existing homeless. A lot of what I'm discussing is long-term and is meant as a primer for future discussion and policy on the matter. However, even in short term, I would say that later today, the city of Waterloo Economic Development Strategy for 2019 to 2024 will be presented and discussed, and on this matter, I hope that the recommendations will be considered in such a way so as to not overvalue the success of a dollar figure associated with economic activity at the expense of the less fortunate. The city has already seen enough gentrification at the expense of tenants as is. Thank you for your time. Due to a misunderstanding on our behalf, we did not budget for 10 minutes per person, so we will yield our remaining time.
My name is Karen Maldonado. I am a resident of Waterloo. I am a student at the University of Waterloo, and for the past four months, I've had to constantly worry about finding a place to stay between semesters, the distinct possibility of becoming homeless, my family going nearly bankrupt every month because of how expensive my rent is, and the distinct possibility that I might have to live on the streets because my rent of $670 a month is considered cheap. Since my journey into the personal hell that me and hundreds of other students have had to endure, I've spent as much time as I could into finding solutions, resolving this crisis, not only affecting this town but the entire region as well. These are my short-term solutions that might not do everything we want long-term, but in the now and in the present can make things a lot better for a lot of people. The first way to partially resolve this issue I'd like to talk about is the removal of subsection 2.7(c) from municipal bylaw 2011-047 subsection 2.7(c), which would require that all residential buildings with three or more stories be licensed, which would make their landlords be held accountable to a higher standard than the life of career criminals that has become so pervasive in the region. We have discussed this change in the bylaw with Councilman Jeff Henry and Officer of Bylaw Enforcement Shane Turner, and during our meeting, it was determined that this change to the bylaw would require a small force of people to resource the resources needed to start the enforcement of an alleged bylaw change, as well as inspecting the apartment buildings for violations. This is the first and easiest request to start the short-term solutions, to create a council committee to investigate the resources required for an amendment to remove subsection 2.7(c) from municipal bylaw 2011-047, which the Ontario Municipal Powers Act of 2001 explicitly enables this town council to do. My second and easiest, my second easiest request, I must first state that one of the most prominent criminal activities that the landlords in the region that own the apartment complexes engage in is charging $500 for a key deposit. You can even find that these landlords, such as KW4Rent and Accommodity U, have this information displayed on their websites. This is admitting to a crime on their own website and encouraging people to pay for that crime. Despite this being in violation of the Landlord Tenant Act of 2006 subsection 134 subsection 1a, which explicitly states that this is illegal, even according to the Social Justice Division of Ontario's website, this is again illegal. This is even covered in their question and answer section. Can my landlord charge a key deposit? Yes, but only if the deposit is refundable and the amount of the deposit is not more than half the expected cost of replacing the key or keys if they are not returned to the landlord. The landlord must give the deposit back when the tenant turns in their key or keys at the end of their tenancy. With a $500 key deposit, that means that the 10-ounce key would have to be made out of pure solid gold in order to warrant a $500 replacement fee. I can give all the town council members or anyone that requests this a link to the Department of Social Justice of Ontario's website if it would aid in finding the exact bylaw that this rendered illegal. More interesting is the fact that these key deposits are often deducted from, based on damage or lessedly missing furniture in these apartment units, which would mean that the key deposit is a damaged deposit, which is also explicitly illegal according to the same Ontario government website. Can the landlord charge the tenant a damaged deposit? No. A landlord cannot collect a damaged deposit to pay for damage done to the unit. Also, a landlord cannot use the last month's rent to cover damages in the unit. The rent deposit can only be used for last month's rent before the tenancy ends. It goes on to state, if the landlord finds that a tenant has damaged a unit or caused damage to the building, the landlord can give the tenant a notice of termination and/or ask them to pay for the damages. If the tenant doesn't pay, the landlord can apply to have the LTB determine if there are damages and what should be done about them. Instead, they charge a $500 key deposit, and at the end of your lease, deduct from it based on alleged damages incurred. I have multiple friends from across my university to testify that this is what takes place. It is not hard to find any student that has gone through this process and lost a large deal of money as a result of these key deposits, which are in reality damaged deposits, both of which are again explicitly illegal under the Landlord Tenant Act of 2006. My request here is that the Office of Bylaw Enforcement look into this evidence of blatant bylaw violation as soon as possible to bring those that have forced these deposits upon people to justice. My third and final request regards leniency of the enforcement of regional bylaw 13-050 of the region of Waterloo, subsection 2t, which spans the erecting of tents or any other temporary structure without authorization. This impacts the homeless most of all, because during winter break and during the coming winter months, not only will there not be less university buildings available for homeless students to sleep in as they have been for the past three months, when they technically shouldn't, but the homeless people that are not students in the region will be relying on tent cities to find shelter in them. There is no reason that these innocent people should suffer because they can't find housing that they can afford or housing, period. There is no reason that they should suffer for being poor, as has been the norm for many years. My request here is not only for leniency on the enforcement of subsection 2t of the regional bylaw, but outright authorization of these tents... regional bylaw, but outright authorization of these tent cities, as well as protection for these people, as it is well-known that certain hate groups attack these tent cities physically because they are normally technically illegal, and thus the destruction of these tent cities is, according to them, legal and doing the right thing. Making homeless people suffer because they are poor and trying not to die in the cold is not justice. It is cruelty. My request for the town council regarding this is that there is no more suffering of the people in these tent cities, and that they are no longer attacked because they are poor. Don't let injustice prevail. I yield my time.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming and speaking with us today on these very important matters. I'm looking to council to see if there are any questions of the delegates. Councilor Vith.
Through you, Chair Bonagor. Thank you, and thank you all for coming. It's, you've brought a lot of things to us. I just, and I didn't catch your first name, the last speaker?
Kieran.
Hi, oh, sorry. Okay, you are on the list. Kieran, have you, I was aware of the key deposit issue, and I think that's a terrible thing. Has anybody ever, or do you know of anybody that's gone after a landlord to get that money back?
I actually do know of quite a few people, like when they try charging them extra for, oh, we're missing a chair, and it ends up being in one of the rooms. I do know of people that have basically gone to the manager to demand that the money goes back, and even then they don't get the entire key deposit back. I know of multiple students that are willing to testify to this if that's what the council asks.
Well, I just, I wonder why if students, if you know, and I know that, because I live, my ward is, there's tons of students and low-income housing in my ward, so I know about this, and I know that it's a huge issue, but if you, if people know about it, are they afraid that they're gonna, they're gonna get kicked out if they ask for the key deposit back?
It's that when they do ask for the key deposit back, they either say, we'll give it back to you in two weeks and then never do, we'll give it back to you in a month and never do, or there's various communication between the two groups, and they never get the key deposit back in the first place, which KW4Rent is particularly guilty of.
Okay, so I guess renters in general, not just students, all renters need to know ahead of time that that's an illegal thing, that they shouldn't, that they're not to pay that much money for a key deposit. So it's education, I guess, in the end, right?
It is not only education that's needed, but enforcement, because these companies know about it. If you mention the bylaw and say that the key deposit is illegal, they'll ask for proof, and when you show them proof, they'll conveniently give it back to you. But otherwise, why should they give you the key deposit? They have your money. You're just a regular student. Are you really gonna fight someone with lawyers?
So, Councilor Vasik.
Thanks through you, Councilor Bonagor. Thanks all of you for your continued work on this. I was curious, Kieran, about one of your recommendations, which is the authorization of tent cities. I'm curious if you're familiar, if there are other cities that have authorized it, and if there are exemplars that the City of Waterloo could look to.
I actually did not get to research any, however, this is what I could come up with given the limited time that I had to definitively look into tent cities. I was given an email, I emailed Kevin Gerlach, who I believe is the city clerk for what bylaw is enforced that this, that basically bans tent cities, and I was told that Shane Turner's department is the one that covers the enforcement of it. And because he's the officer of bylaw enforcement, he would be the one to actually enforce the removal of tent cities. And I, to answer your question, I do not know of any other town that has enabled tent cities, but all that's needed for them to be allowed is just giving approval to the authorization of these tents. It's not that hard.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Looking for any other comments or questions from council? Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you through the chair. Again, thanks to the students for your enthusiasm of, you know, looking at this issue, which we all know is a serious issue. I think last time we talked, I mentioned about certainly stratifying and separating out all the different issues, because you're, there's a lot of the issues there, I would say almost are equivalent in the time that the speakers took, equivalently either provincial responsibility or regional responsibility, or then city and other responsibility. And since nobody else here is a regional councillor, I will speak on behalf of the shelter system, which is run by the Region of Waterloo, which is across the street, that I do know for a fact that last week, the Youth Shelter Service, One Roof, was had surplus capacity all last week. We just have, happen to have the data for that, so that is certainly available. But I did find out that you have to go through the Prevention and Diversion Program criteria of the Region of Waterloo. So I don't really know how that works, but that's something that you can certainly refer to other students, because it tests for definitive homelessness. So I can't really speak further to that, but I do know there was surplus capacity in the system, and it is on the light rail transit system, about fifteen, seventeen minutes from the university area. So hopefully that helps.
And Councilor Henry.
No, no, I'll echo others in saying thank you for coming forward again, as you see from the media table. Our media table doesn't normally have people at it. This is discouraging to us, because we deal with important issues every single time we have a meeting. But it does show that, that folks are interested in paying attention to those, to those items you're raising, and that's useful, and that's helpful. As I've said, you know, before around this table, over a large number of years, everybody deserves a safe place to live. And being able to provide that and support that, recognizing the vast majority of those places are provided by the market, and so our tools are sometimes direct and quite often indirect, that, that we do appreciate hearing where there are challenges in the system and being able to work together to figure out how to plug some of those holes. So with that, I thought I would let, let council know, you know, what, what the results were of the conversation that we were able to have with Shane and I and the group the other week. I know Shane's off today. But we focused the conversation, this conversation, I'm sure there'll be more, we focused this conversation on, on that safe, you know, safe concerns around, around housing and, you know, those, those areas where, where folks have found significant deficiencies, whether it's mold, whether it's heating units, whether it's those substantive, you know, property standards concerns that, that nobody deserves to have to face in their, in their housing and home. And around those, we had a few, a few areas that we agreed we would work on and move forward with. The first was on education. I know councils are aware, since Mr. Turner's, you know, let us know, staff had looked at those same buildings that were subject of the data leak, where there were thousands of, of issues, and over the same time period, staff had received thirteen complaints. So that identifies the wide gulf between, you know, complaints that landlords were receiving and may or may not have been dealing with in an appropriate way. Some, yes, some probably not, and some definitely not. And, and that, that shows that, you know, tenants, student tenants in particular perhaps, but tenants in general, don't know that one of the places they can go, when they don't, when they don't hear back from their landlord and don't, don't get the proper responses, they can call the city. And we do have an ability to go out and enforce, to inspect and to issue orders, and the response that people can get from that and the resolution people can get from that is massively faster than the Landlord-Tenant Board, which is just plagued by, by delays and an inability to enforce its own orders. So we've agreed to work together to help promote as much information as we can on how tenants can, can leverage our staff in that. And there were a few other ideas that, that we shared that I think need to be, you know, discussed and looked into a bit more on, on other tactics that we can use to help push the message further than we already have. And the other area that, that we knew, that we have a strong agreement on, you've heard some points today from, from, from the delegates in various ways, is advocating for change at the provincial level. The Residential Tenancies Act is a problem in many ways. The Landlord-Tenant Board's ability to enforce that act successfully and enforce its own orders at all is woefully inadequate and needs, needs a lot of work. We've heard that the province is interested in looking at the Residential Tenancies Act. I'm not sure whether that will be a good or a bad thing, but it's an opportunity regardless. And so we've agreed that advocating for provincial change is something we can work on together. I've been working with staff on, on highlighting some particular areas, and I've got a couple of updates to make based on last week's meeting to, to make sure that we're, we've got alignment on the asks and the suggestions. And I've got some more from, from our staff that haven't been raised here, but we, we know our issues as well that, that we find in the RTA that we can, we can work on. And the other one that I know, you know, Mr. Turner's taken away to take a look at is the idea of proactive enforcement and what more we can do with that, in the sense that, you know, we, we need to build strong working relationships to have effective and timely action for those kinds of things, and so he's taken back thinking about how they can do that effectively. And I'm sure we'll hear more information from, from Shane as he, as he, as he deals with that operational matter. Fourth is, is, is support for tenant associations and groups to the extent that, that they're acting like neighborhood associations, bringing people together, fostering a sense of cohesion and belonging. And we've got a subgroup on Town and Gown that's actively working on, on those files, and we might see some stuff out of there, but, but there are likely some neighborhood strategy support elements that we might be able to bring to bear for, for groups that have organized or are trying to organize tenants association for the purpose of bringing people together and finding some cohesion and belonging. Those are areas that are strongly in alignment with the city strategic plan and our existing plans and resources. And finally, continued dialogue and discussions. We, we had only so much time together last time, and so as I said, it was, it was focused on, on the maintenance concerns and the ideas around safe housing. There are other concerns that were raised. And I'd say that, as, as the mayor had done, you know, now I, I also raised that, you know, on questions around, you know, social housing and homelessness supports, the folks across the street know a heck of a lot more about that and are, are responsible for, for those matters, and it's worth having conversations with, you know, the mayor's had some preliminary pieces, but Councilor Strickland and Urb, I'm sure, should be, should be hearing about these so that, that our voices at Regional Council are well aware of, of areas within their jurisdiction that, that conversation should continue as well. So as an update to council, that's where, that's where we got to, and I know there's more to do.
Excellent, and I would like to again thank all of the delegates for coming in, and I encourage you to keep the conversation going and continue with working to advocate for yourselves. That's great, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have no presentations listed and no consent motions, so we're heading straight into the staff reports. The first is the technical amendment to the boundary map in the McGregor-Albert Heritage Conservation District Plan. We have staff here in case there are any questions, looking around the horse room. Would someone like to move this, that this report be accepted and approved? Councilor Vasik and Councilor Henry, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you very much. Okay. That was to staff, not to you. Next, we have the revised municipal alcohol policy 2019. We do have staff available for questions, and Beth, I was just wondering if you had some initial remarks to, I know, I understand there's not a presentation, but if there's initial remarks, that would be great.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to issue a point of clarification. On page twenty-seven of the council packet, under additional considerations, the third bullet point states the provincial government has proposed an additional legislative change which would allow municipalities to designate public areas such as parks, sorry, for the consumption of alcohol. We have recently found out that in fact this legislation has been passed, and so that obviously impacts this particular paragraph. We just wanted to clarify that this particular point of legislation doesn't impact the revisions we have brought forward today. It's something which will have to be explored more at a later time. We don't have a lot of information at this point, but in terms of what we're revising, that particular point of the legislation doesn't have bearing on that.
All right, we've got some, any questions for staff? We've got Councilor Vith.
Thank you through you, Chair Bonagor. I just wanna make, I was interested in the third-party catering endorsements and SOPs as for Moses Springer, and I don't know what page that was on, I just printed it out. Twenty-seven, maybe? So does that, does a third-party catering endorsement, that means, is that any restaurant outside of the city that now, that wants, that would wanna have a, an event or some kind of a party there would not be allowed to do that?
The, through you, Chair, the, that change would mean that, yes, only, the only, alcohol could only be served through our food services team and their catering endorsement at Moses Springer. That has been the case already at Albert McCormick, and so we're aligning those two, we're proposing to align those two facilities.
Okay, so, so only, back to the food, so if a, so an individual wanted to have, no cater, like they can't have another restaurant cater in any of our facilities?
Through you, Chair, this is not about food service, only alcohol service? So they couldn't bring in another organization to provide alcohol service? Alcohol service could only be through our food services team and their catering endorsement?
Okay.
But they could, someone having an event with food could hire other catering companies?
Oh, I see Steve moving to the chair now. Okay, thank you, and just one more. I was reading about only using soft plastic cups in our facilities, and that, that to me is not a sustainable practice. Is that something that we are, we have to stick with, or is that something we can change? I don't know, I just see, that's not a, if we're in a climate emergency here, then those kind of things should be rethought, in my opinion.
Through you, Chair, yes, absolutely. I just wanna point out that that's intended to be a guideline. In that point of the policy, it's really to ensure that, that materials such as glass, which compose a safety hazard if they are used, are not brought into the events, but other materials such as paper or any other more sustainable material, material could be used and probably would be allowed. It's meant to be a guideline, it's not a hard set, that you must use plastic.
Councilor Henry.
Thank you, Councilor Bonagor, through you. Nadia, could you elaborate a little bit more on what other municipalities are considering? You made reference to there being some proposed changes coming through, and I'm just thinking of larger events or larger activities that might involve a number of facilities that are both within the City of Waterloo and outside, so I'm just curious what some of the other municipalities are considering, and are we going to be in alignment?
Through you, Chair. At the moment, we're not too clear on exactly where other municipalities in the region will go. We believe that Kitchener will be bringing forth changes to their policy in the new year. However, I can't speak to exactly where they will stand on these revisions that we're proposing. You may have seen that Wilmont brought their, attempted to bring their policy forward recently. And as for other municipalities in the region, I can't speak to that at this time.
Just looking around, any other comments or questions from council? Okay, look, do I have a mover? Okay, Mayor Jaworski.
Yeah, I think moving it with respect to Nadia's commentary, and I know Councilor Bonagor had spotted as well, that the commentary on the provincial government, now that we have firm legislation, to ignore that aspect of the, of the report, so to accept the report but ignoring the part that speaks to future law, which is now current law, and we can look at that at a, at a different time.
Second, Councilor Henry, I'll call the vote. Run in favor. Okay, that's everyone. Thank you. And next, we have the Strategic Plan Implementation Update, and I believe we have a presentation from Anna Marie Cipriani. So, welcome to the podium.
All righty, good afternoon. So I'm here to provide some brief context, further context, I think, and to highlight some of the components that are already discussed in the report that you have in your packets today. So indeed, we have created and approved a strategic plan. We have communicated on this strategy, and where we're at right now is that across the organization, we are aligning to this new strategic plan. So in particular, the processes that involve the budget and business plans are underway, and that alignment is also underway. Furthermore, something that I'm involved in and many others are starting to be involved in is developing a more robust way of measuring progress and about our implementation of the strategic plan that will help us to communicate and continue to engage on this work. So in that way, we are seeking to develop a performance management system. So what's happening? There are several components that are already in place and that will really help us to develop a suite of indicators that we can be proud of, that speak to our municipality and our local context and the work that we're engaging in. So the first part in our business plans, I want to be clear about what you can expect in these business plans as they come forward, and there's two things I really want to highlight for you. So firstly, in those business plans, we will identify specific initiatives that align with the strategic plan, and we will also identify primarily output measures specific to those identified initiatives. And many of you will also be familiar with our strategic plan progress updates. Those updates have traditionally happened in the fall, and we anticipate that those will continue in the fall of 2020, '21, and '22. So those updates specifically speak to projects and initiatives that are in the business plan and to progress along that work, and we anticipate that will continue. So when we look at building a performance management system and building it out a bit, there are a few things that we look to. We look to emerging frameworks and also to existing frameworks. So I want to speak to two emerging frameworks. So you'll be familiar to some extent with both of these frameworks. The first one is ISO 37120, and it specifically speaks to municipalities and sustainability. It is an international standard. So we anticipate that in the first quarter of 2020, we will have reported into the framework and will be certified. So that work is underway now across the organization and across the different levels of, you know, for instance, government, whether it be provincial or federal, so all the different parties that will support this reporting, it's underway. The Sustainable Development Goals is another framework that we are engaging in. This framework on a municipal level is not as mature and ready to roll. It is a successful framework at an international level, but at a sub-national level, it is not very mature yet. And so the work that's going to come through the local voluntary review and some work that we're doing ourselves in-house will help to improve the ability of municipalities, and in particular ourselves, to be able to report into this framework and to utilizing it to help us better understand our progress. So while I've discussed briefly two emerging frameworks, we have several existing frameworks that, as a municipality, we report into. And I'd like to walk us through kind of just an overview of some of the reporting that happens already. So we have legislated reporting. Some of those will be through the Building Code or the Electricity Act, the Drinking Water Systems Act, or the Financial Information Return. Other reporting we do might speak to targets and performance measures that are set for us, so be that through the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing or through the LIN, the Local Health Integration Network. We have other voluntary frameworks that we are engaged in, so for instance, the National Water and Wastewater Benchmarking Initiative, the Well-being Waterloo Region Survey work we've recently done, and Regional Sustainability Initiative, an initiative that we report into yearly. We also have online platforms. So when, for instance, citizens engage in services that we offer through Active Net, Pickup Pub, or Engage Waterloo as examples, we also have data and entry into data points through those platforms. In-house, we have electronic management systems such as Amanda, Maximo, PeopleSoft, and GIS. These are also areas where we begin to look to see, you know, all these ways that we have data and access to data about our organization and our community. We do conduct program evaluations across the organization for many of our programs. So as examples, our museums run evaluations, health and safety, there are quarterly reports, and municipal enforcement has their own. At a real operational level, we have many assets, and we inspect those assets regularly. So some of those assets will be playgrounds, trees, turf, outdoor rinks. So all of these existing frameworks are areas where we report regularly, and they also potentially provide opportunities to find the right suite of indicators that work for our organization to create a much more holistic, robust picture of our organization, the services we deliver, and our community. And why we would want to do that is because I think having a holistic corporate reporting framework that reflects our organization is useful, and it, I think, will be a play of looking at existing frameworks and emerging frameworks, and also looking outside of those frameworks for data that works to help us have informed decision-making, and so really focusing on evidence-based decision-making. Also, data helps us communicate, it helps us engage the right people to move forward, and also enables us to be more accountable. So this work, this type of reporting, I think will also help us to further define end states. So what does success look like on any one of the pillars and in all of those objectives that we've identified in our strategic plan? So to sum up, these are just a few highlights of where we are at in implementing the strategic plan and what we are looking towards doing with reporting with regards to the implementation of the STRAP plan and progress, and I hope that gives you a sense of where we're at and what's next. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you for the update. I'm looking around to see if there are questions from council. Councillor Henry, you're first up.
Thank you very much, Chair, through you. Thank you, Anna Marie, for the update. It's always good to know where we're heading and what kind of information will be coming forward. In terms of reporting, I'm always very interested in the qualitative versus the quantitative data, and it's very easy to get the output kind of data, how many times we're doing something or how many people participated in something. What I'm really interested in, though, is how we're going to be able to, or what your thoughts are around the outcomes. So what's the difference we're making with some of these projects, and how are we going to be measuring that? I know it's no small task, but I think that's an important area for us to begin working toward.
So the way that I orient to outputs and outcomes really is how much and how well. And the how well aspect is really the part of evolution of this work. And so I think, you know, as a team of staff that are starting to look at this work, I think we'll take that into consideration. We're also happy to hear if there are examples of what you're finding your counterparts is finding useful to the work, because the how well is a bit more of that storyline, it's a bit more about defining those end states, and I think that the work about defining those end states is something we need to move forward. So if there's anything you wish to offer in terms of, you know, your experience that you've seen as being useful, I'm happy to hear about those aspects.
Great. We'll certainly continue the dialogue, for sure. And what I'm encouraged by is that there is consideration to look at the, what I usually refer to the softer side of it, so what's the difference that we're actually making? Some of the things won't lend themselves to that at all, but if we can be mindful of that as we look at the indicators that we're going to be putting forward, what's it really telling us and what difference is it making? Thank you.
Councillor Bodley.
Thank you, through you, Chair Bonagor. Thanks for all the work that you're doing on this. I know that as a council liaison to the Sustainable Advisory Committee and as a staff liaison to the Sustainable Advisory Committee, I know this is a big thing, the ISO 37120 connectivity to the STRAP plan, and so really pleased to see that we're making some progress on that. It's really exciting, and I just, I kind of just wanted to highlight and connect the dots to our earlier delegations here, some of the data that we're looking to get, whether with respect to housing and with respect to population, social conditions. So we're looking at gathering data on the percentage of people living in affordable housing, the percentage of the city population living in inadequate housing, the number of homeless per 100,000, percentage of people living below the national poverty line, et cetera. So for me personally, I'm a big data guy, and so having this data to help us inform decisions about what we're going to be doing to tackle these problems is extraordinarily important. And so I think it's very timely that we're seeing this today, given the delegations that came forward. And again, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done so far on this issue.
Looking around, any further questions or comments? No, I'm going to throw mine in then for you, Anna Marie. So when I was looking through the report, one of the goals stood out for me, and it was the governance goal for women as a percentage of elected officials. And looking around this horseshoe, I think right now we're doing okay. Doesn't say, well, it'll always be that way, but I think it's quite good. But I'm just curious, is there a way that we could also report on a similar kind of thing when we're looking at the leadership mix across the organization itself?
Sure. So I think when we look at any indicator, I think there's going to be a few things that we assess in terms of, is such an indicator of value, and if so, to whom and how and in what way? So a couple of things would be, you know, one, is the data available? Two, you know, does it align with our strategic plan? Is it something we already, you know, are reporting on? And so when I look to, you know, that indicator that you have in mind, it is a really apt extension, perhaps, of the ISO framework that we are currently reporting into, and it does speak to, I'd say, our strategic plan and the pillar of equity, inclusion, and sense of belonging, and particularly to objective number one. So my sense is it's something I think we could take back and as leadership, you know, reflect on and assess, is there opportunity to have that as part of, you know, how we look at our organization and assess how we do reflect the community, for instance? So thanks for that.
That would be appreciated. Thank you. On that note, do I have, looking for someone to move? Councillor Bodley, second, Councillor Henry. I'll call the vote. Those in favor receiving this, that's everyone. And our next report that's coming up is the City of Waterloo Economic Development Strategy for 2019 to 2024, and we have Justin McFadden coming up to speak with us. Welcome, Justin.
Okay, thank you. I feel like I'm on an episode of Between Two Ferns here with all the point settings. So I'm going to kick things, it's a long time coming, it's been about a year of work, and what we're going to do today, I'm going to quickly introduce Trudy Parsons, who I think is a familiar face for council. She was our consultant on the project, and Trudy's going to walk us through kind of the process that led us to today, and then we'll jump into a high-level overview of the strategy and then take some questions.
Thanks very much, Justin. Good afternoon, everyone. So for a few minutes, I'm just going to speak primarily to the project overview, and then Justin will do the actual presentation of the strategy, and of course, happy to answer any questions upon completion. So similar to the corporate strategic plan, we had created a phased approach to develop the economic development strategy, primarily looking at where is it that we are now, so what is our current situation, understanding the direction and the ability to move forward, so where is it we want to go, and then, of course, creating a strategy that is actually going to guide the direction to move us to that desired state. There were several forms in which were utilized to gather the information. You know, certainly, of course, there's always secondary research, which you see primarily outlined there in Phase One. In Phase Two, because this project was happening simultaneously to the corporate strategic plan, we actually worked together with the corporate strategic plan team as well as the economic development team and combined some of the questions in the interview process so that we were actually able to utilize individual time, you know, through one interview versus having to reach out twice to many of the same people. And so that really helped to support those one-on-one conversations to get some insight and perspectives from those that were being targeted for those interviews. Of course, there is an economic development committee which was involved throughout the process, and we had the opportunity to present and have dialogue and discussion with that group as well. One of the things specifically that I wanted to showcase during the presentation was the aspirations that emerged through our SOAR assessment. So again, council would be familiar with SOAR in comparison to SWOT, so really, you know, looking at what are the aspirations, what are the risks, and what are the results. So there were a number of other pieces to this, but specifically wanted to draw your attention to the aspirations that were identified as we engaged in the dialogue and conversations. And you can see that there are six here that really came out strongly from the dialogue and from the research. And so what we did was we wanted to apply, oh, that slide's missing, sorry. So what we did was we wanted to look at, you know, what were the core elements that were important from an economic development strategy perspective that individuals and organizations that we had spoken to really wanted to make sure that we reflected in the strategy. And again, as you can see, you know, the use of innovation was very important, recognizing the importance of the interconnectedness between workforce development and economic development and having the availability of that talent to support the strategy and the business development resulting from that, recognizing the importance of a diversified economy, not having our eggs all in one basket, looking at the attractiveness of the city as a core indicator to be able to attract talent and to keep talent and businesses in the area, making sure that we had a supportive system and an ecosystem in place that actually promoted business development and business investment and attraction, and as we heard through presentations today, the importance of the availability of housing as a key element to economic development. So on that note, I will pass it over to Justin, and of course, as I said, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I think your slide was this one.
Oh, it went, it moved. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, so we'll kind of go through the strategy fairly quickly here. I think I've got six minutes on the timer. So we have three strategic goals, nine strategic objectives, 27 targeted actions within those objectives, and 56 activities that complement those targeted actions. So there's a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff in here. We'll go through them one by one. So strategic goal number one is to start and attract. So a few pieces here. So obviously, what we're trying to do is encourage the starting of new businesses and attracting new ones. Objective number one, enhance startup and emerging arts and culture industry support. So really, what we're trying to do here is change the lens with respect to how arts and culture is viewed in the community. It's really, I think, traditionally been viewed as something that you experience, and what we're trying to do is have this now be viewed going forward as an industry in and of itself, an industry with real jobs, real career opportunities, and invested in like any other sector that we have here in the region. So that's really what those pieces are there to try and achieve, encourage development of arts incubator hubs. We've made similar investments in tech hubs in the region and the like. So that's kind of the focus of objective number one. Objective number two, enhance advanced investment attraction through targeted outreach. So there's, Waterloo Economic Development Corp traditionally focuses on FDI, so that outreach to new investment from outside the region. So we're playing a supportive role in that, and then looking at a couple of other areas where we can take a leadership role. And so two of those that we've targeted would be focusing on social enterprises and nonprofits. If you look at the region, it is kind of a strength that we have quite a number of strong nonprofits here in the region, CG. strong nonprofits here in the region, CG, Perimeter, and others of different, of different scales. So, so perhaps a bit of a focus on that, as well as a focus on attraction of film and television, media content development. So, this is a little different than what you would see in Cambridge, where their focus is on, you know, film shoots and, and production. This would really be a focus on, you know, leveraging those technology resources that we have here in post-production, animation, digital content development, those sorts of Objective number three, strategic priority number one, improve investment readiness. So, continued development of city-owned lands, so a lot of work on the West Side employment lands. I know council's very familiar with, with the work that we're doing there, and that Sandy's leading on that project. We've hit some pretty, pretty good milestones on that recently. So, we're, we're definitely moving in, in the right direction, and we'll be looking to be able to start marketing those lands later this year. Looking at uptown development, uptown land city, the city of Waterloo has 15-plus properties in uptown that are ripe for different types of uses, but certainly, employment being a key one, and, and part of the reason why we're taking the lead on that. And then, build an inventory of resources to encourage investment and support invest, investment opportunities as, as we go forward. Objective number four, support strategic talent attraction. So, again, taking a bit of a more supportive role. Some of these initiatives, we're taking leadership, others, we're taking a more of a supportive role. There's all kinds of talent attraction-related initiatives happening region-wide. I won't go into all of them here, but certainly, we want to make sure that that's important, an important thing we focus on, and we, we support all of those initiatives that are happening region-wide on, on talent attraction. Strategic priority number two, preserve and grow. So, keeping what we have and making sure that it continues to, to grow and expand. So, really, taking a, a, a big focus on BRNE. So, it's something that we have done in the past, but we really want to focus our efforts on a, on a real program around business retention and expansion. We really want to go out and, and understand from the community in a very targeted, systematic way, you know, what are some of the issues that companies are having here, and how do we action to help solve those issues? So, that's, that's really what objective number five is focused on. Objective number six, enhance development of creative spaces. So, this partially supports objective number one, which is focusing on enhancing, you know, how we view culture as an industry. So, so focusing on investment for new, new exhibition space, making sure that the arts and culture industry has those spaces available. Sometimes, they don't have necessarily the, the amount of funding that other organizations would have. So, making sure that the development community, for example, understands the value of supporting these types of spaces and how it can impact the rest of their, their business. So, so a lot of advocacy work on that. Also, the MAT funding will come into play quite a bit on objective number six, especially as we increase investment in cultural and sport tourism, as well as increased capital for arts and the culture industries. Strategic priority number three, organize and empower. This is where we're really trying to take a leadership position in the community and encourage a bunch of different things to happen. So, objective number seven, encourage increased diversity in local industries. So, you know, supporting those networking opportunities, we're targeting women in creative industries. One of the areas that we see us taking a, a bit of an underlying focus would be in supporting, you know, STEAM initiatives for, for kids. So, if you look at what's HIP, what HIP is doing in partnership with the University of Waterloo, supporting those types of initiatives to, you know, encourage, you know, women in STEAM and girls as well. Support partner initiatives to promote diversity and inclusion. So, as part of our BRNE efforts, for example, taking what we learn and, and know, and obviously, there's a big focus on diversity and inclusion here at the city. I think, I would argue, we're on the forefront of that, and, and really taking those learnings and, and making sure that companies in Waterloo are also following suit in that regard. So, I think that's something that we can take a leadership role in. Showcase that Waterloo is a complete community. This is really about marketing the city and making sure that, you know, the right messaging is, is out there about, you know, what's happening here and all the exciting things, and to encourage that type of investment that we want to see. Also, supporting the Toronto Water Region Corridor Initiative. This is one of the key pieces of talent attraction, one of the key issues that, that we're seeing, and one of the last pieces. I know that Metro Links has spoken recently about some progress that they have made on their business plan, looking forward to 2025, but we still want to keep focused on that to make sure. A lot of, a lot of work has gone into that to get us to this point. We want to make sure that that is seen through to 2025. And finally, enhance quality of life and quality of place. Advocate for diversified housing options. I think this is probably, perhaps breaking a little bit of ground on the, on the economic development side of things, but it really ties into, from our perspective, one of the ways it ties in at least, is making sure that, you know, companies here have a full range of talent that they can have access to. If people can't live here, they can't work here. And so, that's, that's certainly one of the lenses that we're using as we focus on diversified housing options, and some work in our department has already begun in that regard. And then, leveraging incentive programs federally, provincially, making sure that companies here are aware of that. So, that's kind of the highlighted quick. I'm 44 seconds over, so I think we did okay. Any questions that you have for myself, Trudy, or perhaps even some members of the ACTEV team? I think we have quite a few folks here.
You just stole my line. Any questions from council? Just kidding. Any questions from, from council to staff? Counselor Hahn?
Thank you, Chair Bonagor. Go through you. Thank you for the update, both of, both of you, on where things are at with the economic development strategy. I'm curious about the, it's with strategic priority number one, and specifically looking at increasing the number of not-for-profits and social enterprises. And I wondered if you've given any thought to looking at those for-profits that are considering becoming B-corp, or, or the existing not-for-profits that are currently looking at a for-profit arm or a, or an arm that's going to have them going in a diversified revenue stream, and how those would be captured? Or are they going to be captured?
I would say that at this stage of the game, it's, it's one of those items on the list that we're very much at the beginning stages of. So, we haven't evolved into, you know, in certain terms of targeting which organizations we will target, you know, creating a focus list, that sort of thing. So, that type of input would actually be kind of, kind of interesting. I don't think that we were using that particular lens in terms of companies that are looking to transition from one to another. So, that's, maybe we can chat a little bit offline about that, because I know you've got some, some interesting background in that area, so.
I, I would be interested in furthering, and it's not so much the company's transitioning to it, it's considering another diverse, another revenue stream, so establishing something in it. I would hate for that to be lost in our numbers. It's not net new companies, but it's a net new innovation or innovative way that they're looking at bringing revenue and jobs and everything else into the community.
That's interesting.
Thank you.
Counselor Bodley.
Thank you, through you, Chair Bonagor. I had a couple of questions. One was around, in the, in the risk section of the report, there was a comment around complacency at the City of Waterloo and concern that we are taking our success from an economic development perspective for granted. And I'm wondering whether you could speak to that, whether you have any comments about what we're doing or not doing that may be leading to that complacency risk, at least from a perception perspective?
Yeah, I, I can, so, through you, through your Chair Bonagor, to, to your Chair, to you, Counselor Bodley. So, in terms of, sorry, your question was about complacency, right? Yeah, so, so certainly, that would have been part of the feedback that came through some of our different sessions. I think, I think that that was certainly, when I started in the role about six years ago, that was, that was, I think, something that was pointed to for some of, some things that had happened in the past. I don't really, you know, being in the role, I mean, I don't really feel like we're being complacent as a, as a municipality, or certainly as, as a city or a region, whether it be citywide, or with, if you look at all the different individuals that we have here. In fact, I think that we're probably one of the most proactive regions that I've had the, you know, I've, I've experienced and I've lived in other places. The community here is very engaged. I don't think you'll find another community that's very engaged, much more engaged on the economic development front. We are sort of one cog in many wheels that we support here. So, I know it was, it was a comment that, that kind of came in through, then we, so we, we make sure we account for and, and make sure all of the feedback, or at least a summary of all the feedback, is, is included in the, in the report. But it's something that, obviously, you always want to make sure you're not being complacent, but it's not something that I feel like this community sort of is.
That's good. Thank you. And a second question. So, in the, in the strap plan, in a number of locations, it talks about intervention or investment. And we're talking about really funding and choosing where we're going to, to spend some of our economic development dollars. And I know that we get a lot of requests for funding from a, from a whole host of different groups.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if we have sort of a, an assessment tool? Because sometimes those requests are pretty small, and I know at ACTEV, at the committee, they're small, we discuss them, and even part of the conversation is, well, it's only, it's only $10,000.
Yeah.
Or, you know, it's not, it's, it's not a big investment, and, and we think, we think that we're going to get a return on it. But sometimes, we're getting requests that are significantly more than, than that. And I'm wondering if we have some sort of a tool within the economic development group that allows us to assess when these funding requests are coming forward? Whether or not they're aligned with our economic development strategy, whether they're aligned with our broader strategic plan?
Yeah.
And some way of giving sort of a scorecard to that? Because it seems like we are a little maybe reactive in, in that we're accepting sort of requests and hearing what people have to say, as opposed to going out there when it talks about investment or intervention.
Yeah, I think when you, when, when you, when it's known that you may have some money to invest, it's pretty, it's pretty easy to be reactive. The, the opportunities kind of find their way to your door. We, we don't have a formal tool, but part of the reason why we wanted to get this economic development strategy done was so that we could, you know, put everything through the lens of, of the economic development strategy. So, to ensure that we're, you know, we're, we're doing things that this council supports and that the city, you know, the city wants to support. So, so that was, that was part of the reason why we wanted to create this, was to help us, you know, sort of better inform those types of decisions, better to direct those opportunities as they come in. We've been at this, I've been in this role now for, for six years, so I have pretty good, pretty good feeling for, you know, opportunities as, as they come through, and whether or not they'll be received or productive. We've had a few kind of repeat investment requests, different groups that have come through with different proposals over time. So, so we have a pretty good, a pretty good sense of that. We put it through the economic development committee typically. If it's a, if it's a significant investment, get their feedback, and, and then, look at the budget as we go forward into the future, and look at the past trends in terms of asks that have come forward, and kind of, kind of be able to assess sort of what that looks like for us in terms of future investments. We also have, you know, as part of that, we also have a pretty good opportunity to convince folks to flex their asks that, that come our way. So, I, I don't know if we've ever really supported a full ask that's ever come through. We usually go through some sort of a negotiation process to look at what we think we can support, given our resources over time. The nice thing about how the Economic Development Reserve has been transitioned in the last couple of years, in terms of how it's been funded, or the transitioning's been, the funding has been transitioned, is that now we have a consistent look, year after year, in terms of the exact amount that we'll have for the next nine years in that reserve. And, and previous to that, it was sort of basically a percentage of surplus that the city would have. In some years, it was, you know, a nice number, a big number, and some years, it was zero. So, it was hard to kind of forecast, you know, as those, those opportunities arose, but we're in a much better position now.
Counselor Vasik.
Thanks through you, Counselor Bonagor. This might be a question for Tony, just thinking about the IAP2 training. And so, I noticed in this document, because it's been ongoing, and the IUP2 training is still pretty new, I was wondering how we might be able to transition to using the term "publics" versus stakeholders in our documents, and if communications might be able to help with some of that wording, so that we can communicate what "publics" means, and, and how that is different from stakeholders? So, staff kind of throughout the organization don't have to muddle their way through a definition of it, but if they can be supported to really understand what that means in their, in the context of their work? Yeah, okay. Cool, thanks. And then, just two other, two other pieces. I've been thinking about the transportation, transportation master plan update, which was largely the 2011 one for this review, because that's what exists now. So, just curious about what your plans are for working with the, the new plan, as that kind of comes into play through the economic development strategy?
Yeah, so, we, we view that as, as one of kind of the, the really interesting toolboxes that we have in our selling toolbox for, for marketing the city. So, in terms of transportation master plans, LRT, all of those sorts of assets that we have, I think it, it's good that we've been in a position to have a little bit of input on how things evolve. At ACTEV, I'm learning, or have learned, that we do get involved in a lot of different areas within the city, which is exciting, and have some, have some input. But in that, in that particular area, we kind of look at that as, as, as something that we're now taking, all the good work that the city has done and council on making those decisions and making those investments. And it's really our opportunity to now take that and market that to the world.
Okay, thanks. And then, just last piece. I mean, obviously, really exciting that this report talks about housing affordability and arts and culture. I think you said, like, if people can't live here, they can't work here. And so, I think that's really important. So, I really appreciate that, and really great to see arts and culture in there as well. Just two points that I wanted to, to, to mention. I was hoping that if you could, even though we don't want to include specific arts organizations so that we don't kind of, you know, prioritize some over the others, I really would love to see if it's possible, arts organizations or relevant arts organizations, something like that, under the partners section? Because I just would hate to see arts organizations look at the document and see themselves missing from some of the objectives. Not all, but some?
No, and it's, it's the second question that's come up today on that. And so, I, I get that. Our intention was really to focus on external groups that are sort of external to arts and culture, and how they could, you know, add some, add some funding and add some value. But it's, I don't think it's a big change to add a word that says, arts and culture. We'll come up with something, but something broad-based that, that covers the industry as a whole. Yeah.
And Mayor Jawoski?
Well, just a big thank you for the, the focus on the arts and culture industry. I've had the opportunity to meet with Astero and a number of people in the community recently. And I think what really rings true to me is last term of council, we made the community, investment in the Commutech Data Hub over five years, solidified that, brought Commutech to Uptown Waterloo, made the investment in the, over four years, in the Accelerator Center, which generated nearly 200 companies and helped incubate them. And then, I think finally, we invested in Evolve Greens.
Right.
Over a period of years. And you think we should have CANDAS, to have that green incubator here, Clean Tech Incubator. And I think that's exciting. And if we can take that success, which I well understood in business, and convert that as success in the arts and culture industry, I think that would be a, a key achievement for this term of council. So, glad to see it was listed as such a high priority, and wish you all the best with that, and to the team, all the best with that.
Thank you.
So, I, if any other comments from council? More questions? I have a few for you, Justin, if I may. So, overall, I mean, you state in the report that we want culture to be a strong brand here, and for that to happen, that's going to require a massive shift in how we value or revalue the arts. So, I, the report is a great start on that, and I urge you to keep on working with partners to help make that shift. Overall, I, to pick up on a comment from Counselor Vasik, it was, I think we're missing an opportunity in this report, and that is active transportation as an economic development tool. So, businesses have told me that the LRT and a connected active transit network is specifically why they have set up shop in Waterloo. So, I think, and, and that is also a key attractor when you're trying to bring global talent to our city. But I didn't see much of it, or much mention of it, in the report. So, I'd like to ask if it's possible to include public transit and active transportation as an actual economic development priority or tool, or something like that?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think, I think we viewed that as one piece to the marketing story. We talked about marketing quite at length in terms of, you know, focusing on that. And actually, we've had Ryan Mountie's former older, old position transformed a bit. And we have Kristen Sainsbury who has joined us. And a part of, a big part of her role is marketing for the, for the team, so for the groups, so the group as a whole, including arts and culture. So, so that's, that's a big, that's kind of how we were viewing it when we were, when we were building out, building out the strategy, that it's, you know, we've done some amazing things in that space and we'll certainly focus on marketing it. Happy to add something, you know, either kind of under a marketing lens where we, I don't, I don't see us at this, to me, it kind of feels like it's baked at this point in terms of building, you know, LRT, oops, sorry, LRT and some of the infrastructure. And really now we're focusing on a marketing phase of it. That's kind of how, how we view it, or I kind of view it. Certainly as more opportunities to enhance active transportation and whatnot, we did play a role in the scooter pilot, for example. So we do see ourselves, you know, playing a role in that where necessary, but in terms of kind of where we're at today, looking at it as a marketing tool. So happy, happy to kind of add something on that front to kind of maybe highlight that we'll focus on marketing that as part of our overall marketing strategy?
If you could avoid actually just putting it in the marketing bucket. When we're looking at things like developing the West Side employment lands, transportation and connection is going to be part of its economic viability.
That's true.
So if we can try to take it just out of just a marketing.
Yep.
Bucket and, I don't know yet how it would fit in or what kind of role it would play, but I mean, how we get around our city is going to impact our economic viability.
Sure.
So if we can try and factor that in to the report, just to, just to highlight that we recognize that and maybe working with other departments towards that, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
And then I'm just going to whip through some other things that I flagged. I also really appreciate that housing affordability and accessibility being part of this. On page 18 of the report, I really just want to be very clear to the people who are reading this report and seeing our strategy about where our priorities lie. And it says housing accessibility, it's not listed as a priority for people at the start of the business chain. Like, it's not listed as a priority for startups and new ventures. It's really only listed for established businesses. But if you can't afford a home here, you're probably not going to start a business here or a graduate's probably not going to stay here. So I, if we could include housing accessibility as a priority for fledgling as well as established businesses, that would be appreciated.
Sure.
Counselor Vasik was, I support your request as well for having arts industry included as potential partners when we, when we're looking to strengthen the arts industry. For, on page 23 of the report, Action Area 7 is looking at the uptown area. I would posit that having more parking should not be one of the measures of success. That would actually go against the uptown vision and our strategic plan. Active transit, better connectivity, and redistributed parking might be a more accurate goal to be aiming for. And then on page 30 of the report, in objective, objective seven, it's speaking about your efforts to promote networking and connection for women in STEM and STEAM. As a woman who works in STEM/STEAM, I just want to add just a small note of caution that events for women in these sectors, they're helpful, but they're something of a stopgap measure. They don't necessarily address underlying systemic issues. It's called kind of, it's a fix the women approach so that it's easier for them in a broken system, as opposed to fixing the system, so that women are equally welcome and equally successful there. So if we could please shift the wording to be more similar to the, to objective, the objective below that, where we're shifting our focus to identifying systemic barriers to, and opportunities for improvement. I think that would be appreciated.
Yep. Okay, and then I'm looking, I'm looking at, so to move that, I'll look to the mayor.
Okay, with, with the amendments? Okay. That council approved the City Waterloo Economic Development Strategy 2019 to 2024, including the following amendments. Include active transportation as an attractor for global talent. Include housing accessibility as a focus on priority one for startups and new ventures as well. Include the arts industry in list of partners for objective one. Enhance startup and emerging arts and cultural industry support. Replace more parking as a measurement of success for Action Area 7 with redistributed parking. And review language for objective seven and shift focus to identifying systemic barriers and opportunities for improvement.
Anyone care to second that? I've got Counselor Freeman. Any discussion? We'll call the vote, those in favor. That's everyone. Okay. Okay, thank you, team. And thank you, Trudy. Sorry I didn't introduce you at the start there.
Thank you very much, everyone.
So we've got no formal or informal public meetings tonight and no consideration of notice of motion from previous meetings. No notice of motions for tonight. No communications and correspondence and no regional informational correspondence. No unfinished business, so we write up to new business. Any new business from the horse crew? No, everyone's keen to go. Okay, so if we're all, no, no new business, no questions? Would you move to adjourn? Counselor Veth is ahead of us. Counselor Freeman has a second. Everyone in favor of finishing up? That's everyone.
For committee, the whole meeting.